Okay, welcome, welcome Mahopac community. This is another exciting installment of our regular, regular meeting, our business meeting for November 18th, 2021. Can I entertain a motion, please, to open this meeting?
So moved.
Vice President Savino, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, and it was a tie between trustee Massofra and trustee McDonough, so we'll go with trustee Massofra.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for law.
Thank you, everyone, please be seated. Okay, what I wanted to do is I want to thank the community and staff for responding to the superintendent search and remind them that the survey closes on November 22nd. We've gotten a lot of surveys, keep them coming in, we love the, we love the input, and it's, you know, it's a really, it's a really terrific thing, the community getting involved like this. I did want to also point out about the, about our varsity football team, I know Anthony will probably touch on it as well, but our varsity football team fought a good fight down at, down at Rye, facing the Rye Garnets a few, a few weeks back in our, in our playoffs. We took them all the way to overtime and, and we were right there. And Rye ended up kicking after, after an amazing goal line stand, Rye ended up kicking a, a field goal and, which propelled them into the, into the semifinal against Somers, which they, which they lost in a, in a tough game. But, but the Indian football team didn't disappoint, the, the boys and the coaching staff worked their tails off and they, and they represented us very, very well, and I'm very, very proud of each and every one of the members of the team and the staff over there. So congratulations to our, to our football team. I also wanted to, wanted to extend over to the girls volleyball, they went down to Mamaroneck and fought the good fight. The Mamaroneck team was, was, was poised and ready to go, having a home field, home court advantage, and they were able to, they were able to take us in, in a, in a, in a few sets and in three sets. But, but again, the girls fought, they fought hard, and they had one heck of a season. So my congratulations also to our, to our girls, our girls volleyball team. What I'd like to do right now is remind everybody there's a lunar eclipse tonight, we haven't seen one, it's a partial lunar eclipse, you won't see this one for another 500 years, I expect, expect the, the community to go out there, it's from 2:00 in the morning to, till about 7:00, and with the, with the good colors happening probably, they said between 3:45 and, and 6:30. So, so make sure you go out there because you won't see it, you'll have to wait another 500 years to see it. So, you know, I, I won't, I won't be able to see it, but I will get up and, and take a look at it. With that, all kidding aside, I'd like to introduce our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo, and he's got some special presentations. Anthony, take it away.
Thank you, President Longley. Before I introduce tonight's most speakers, I just want to echo that next month at our December board meeting, we will be honoring all of our, our teams, not only volleyball for coach championship in their league, but honoring our cross-country team and some of their achievements and accolades, and honoring all of our whole league, exceptional student athletes, as well as our Carnegie Award winner. Basically, what we're doing in the month of December is honoring our full sports program. So we look forward to that next month. Also, board, we had to move our lead presentation till next month also because of an unforeseen circumstance, and we'll be doing that in December. So December will be a great evening of honoring our students academically and regards to our four athletic teams. So without further ado, it's with great pleasure that I present tonight two of our most representatives, Patrick McMahon and George Pomiero, will come up and give you the community and the board an update on how things are going on at Mahopac High School. Gentlemen, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me. I'm George Pomero, I'm the senior class vice president. I'm basically here to just give a quick rundown of what we have done as schools so far event-wise, and then Patrick's going to give a quick rundown of what we're planning to do the rest of the year. So basically, this past month, we had our spirit week during the week of homecoming, and basically what that entailed was each day of the week, we had a different theme for students to dress up and kind of compete against the other grades and against each other, battle for prizes, we had gift cards, and for, the gift cards for the best dressed. And then on Friday, we had our pep rally before our homecoming, and we had the cheer team perform, we had the band perform, and we also had a dance performance, and then we had the introduction of our arts esports. It was a great success, we had a participation throughout all our grades, and it went smoothly, and it went pretty well. So I'm going to pass it over to Patrick now, and he's going to give a quick rundown of what we plan for the rest of the year.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me tonight, I'm the senior class president, Patrick Pomero, if you don't know who I am. And we're planning to, obviously during the winter, we're going to support all of our winter teams in any way that we can do. I think the culture around the school is really very vibrant right now, active, including teachers, administration, and obviously the students, which is why during the spring, we're going to introduce something new, including a spring pep rally. Recently, in the past, sports, you know, usually get overlooked, it's the end of the year, we're studying for Regis exams and AP exams, so we're really going to honor these spring students, and due to the widespread participation through that we had in the fall, we think that it will be such a great week, and we're looking to do the same things. Obviously, we can open it up a little bit more, the theme ideas, as we did in the fall, and again, the participation was so great in the fall, we think the spring pep rally would be nothing short of excellent, and that's what we're looking to do. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. I just want to echo what, what Patrick and George have to say, and I want to thank them, the, you know, most class, senior class, junior class, and the other two classes. I will tell you, being outside for the pep rally and listening to not only the administration, but the teachers, the staff at the high school, it probably was one of the best spirit weeks that Mahopac High School has had in a very, very long time. The compliments on the, the job that all the classes did in the hallways, the way that they participated in the theme events every single day, the way the pep rally was conducted and handled, and the most senior class doing a dance, which I thought was awesome, truly is a, a representation of Mahopac High School and the spirit, the camaraderie that goes on with regards to the student body. And I think a lot had to do with missing it, I think because of COVID and what had happened, and not having that camaraderie and being a part of a, a class in a school, I think meant a lot for everybody to get back and be able to do that as a school. So to senior class, junior, sophomore, freshman, leaders of most, thank you for all you do, it's really important, you are the leaders, you're the ones who go out and, and get that spirit and momentum going, and kudos to you, so thank you once again.
Okay, yep, yep, I'm sorry. That's okay. Let me get this. There we go. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we have, so we have, so, so we have, we have our consent agenda, we have no comments on this evening's consent agenda, so which will lead me down to some of the housekeeping that we have to do monthly, and, and please bear with me on this, but we need, so we'll have a, a few motions in front of us right here. So we have the treasurer's report for September 2021, can I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have warrants for September 2021, can I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Trustee McDonough, second, please?
Second.
Second. Mr. McCracken, very nice, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a revenue status report for September 2021, a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ben Dululo, second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President, all in favor?
Aye.
We have budget transfer September, for September 21, can I get a motion to accept, please? Trustee Massofra, second?
Second.
Second. Trustee Simone, all in favor?
Aye.
We have extra class quarter September for 2021 report, can I get a motion, please, to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Martin, second?
Second.
Ah, Mr. McCracken, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have our regular meeting minutes for October 21st, 2020, a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Vice President Savino, second?
Second.
Second, it was Mr. McDonough, trustee?
General Ben.
Oh, it was Ben?
Yeah.
Oh, so, General Ben. Okay, there you go. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll turn it over now to our superintendent of schools for his superintendent report, Mr. DeCarlo.
Thank you, President Longley, and good evening, everyone. There's a couple of things that I think are important, and I know that have been current events since our last discussion in October. And one of the first conversations, I'm sure, is regards to the ma, the vaccination mandates. There are no vaccination mandates currently in the state of New York, Mahopac School District will not be a vaccination site, although you saw in the paper today, the county is going to have a couple of sites available for people who may want to go through that site for vaccination. What I've said since the almost beginning of the pandemic, the discussions around vaccinations are between you, your family, and your pediatrician. I have not changed that stance, I will not change that stance, nobody will be having anybody come here and put anything in your son or daughter's arm. That's responsibility, responsibility of you and the family, so please, please understand that. And I, I know that's out there, and that's really, really important. I know also that's out there, and, and listen, I get it, comes with being a part of the superintendent, and I know some people, it's very difficult for them to understand, I know some people were protesting tonight, get rid of the masks, and, and here's the issue, I brought this up, interesting enough, about four or five months ago, right here, and I said, we all struggle because there's no matrix, there's no, there's no number to let us know when we can get out of this. If you saw over the weekend, there was a position paper put together by the lower Hudson Association of Superintendents. However, what's, it really upsetting to me is the media twisted what was in the letter, because the letter says about, oh, it needs to be 80% of, you know, vaccination rate and, and people being, you know, whether it's the students, whatever, that's not what that should be, it should be 80% of what, you know, the number of adults that we have and staff that we have, but it needs to be based on what's the positivity rate, okay? Because if you look at it, it makes it look like, well, you can't go back to unmasking unless 80% of your students are vaccinated. That'll never happen, we know that, right? And so at the end of the day, the governor's office, Senator Harkam, Representative Byrne, we've asked, and even the county, I know the county's taken a bad rap through this, the county has said, listen, can you please look at the data statewide, at all the school systems, and see if there's really been any widespread of the, you know, of the virus based on being in school? Now, I'm not going to lie to you, we, we've had a couple this year that we can identify that that's what happened, but it wasn't widespread, it was self, it was contained, and that's why I made a decision to shut down classrooms and have to go to remote, and it worked out well. But, you know, 96% of the other time, it's not spreading. That's what we're asking the state to do, is to do a deep dive. Now I'm going to further upset you, because the DOH person in charge, Zucker, Robert Zucker, now he's out. So now, you have somebody else going in there who's going to say, I need time to get caught up on it, so here we go with this perpetual kind of cycle. So it's really important to understand that as we go through these next couple of months, I'm really hoping, once we get by Thanksgiving and the December holidays, and we get to January and things continue to go low, right now, over the last three weeks, we've had our best numbers since school started, we're averaging single digits, and not a lot of individuals have to be quarantined, we've gotten by the Halloween issue from last year, which is great, because we had that tick up there for Halloween, and now we go into Thanksgiving. I'm hoping, as we put, and thanks to our advocacy group, you know, headed by trustee Dululo and trustee McCracken, that we continue to put pressure on our state government officials to say, hey, listen, once we get through these holidays, if these numbers are low, let's be able to do something about the masking. So that's the update on the vaccines and on the masking and where we're at. However, with that being said, we continue to listen to the public and Mr. Tremblay, along with our assistant superintendents for HR, and Dr. Stowell, and the, and the entire leadership group, we've been able to enhance, should your son or daughter have to go into quarantine or isolation. The Mahopac Central School District values the input of our educational community to help us continually home refine and improve our instructional programs. Wanted to share with you an update related to our approach to providing instructional support for students in quarantine or isolation as a result of an exposure of COVID-19. Currently, if placed in quarantine or isolation, the district provides individual tutoring for students when placed on quarantine. This requires an in-depth scheduling process that may delay students starting their homebound instruction. In an effort to improve and speed up access to homebound instruction, the district anticipates launching a homebound academy with daily established meets for students K-12 staffed by Mahopac teachers. The new academy approach, which we anticipate will start during the week of November 29th, should ensure students receive more timely access to homebound tutors, and in most cases, they will have teachers from their own building providing the instruction. These new regular established tutoring sessions held outside of school hours will be in addition to current daily dropping help sessions staffed by iTutor, providing students live instruction tutoring during normal school hours. More detailed information, including links to established meets and detailed schedule we provide to parents and go, parents or guardians if contacted about the need to quarantine or to isolate due to COVID-19 exposure. Please reach out to Assistant Superintendent Michael Tremblay of Instruction and Professional Learning if you have any individual questions regarding this update to our homebound instructional support. So I want to thank Mike Tremblay, I want to thank the entire leadership team, I want to thank you as parents for your feedback initially when this happened, we've made some, as you can see, modifications, we're hoping that this is limited, but if it is, these are the modifications that we had, so that's a very, very important update. Next update, and this is happening not just here at Mahopac, but it's happening across the country. As we've had the last almost two years of students being hybrid or home instruction, we're trying to get everybody back into a routine, but we are seeing an increase in issues regarding discipline, specifically inappropriate posts on social media, specifically airdropping on social media, specifically at times bullying one another, and we all understand about the social emotional piece of getting back to school. But we all have to remember, school is for learning, not fooling around, not playing around, not being on social media, not snapping pictures when you're in the hallway, okay? Do we, do we, do I all understand the importance of communication with the cell phone as a parent? Yes. Cell phones need to be in backpacks and in lockers, there's no reason for them to be on a, a person during the school day, it only leads to issues, and we're seeing more and more of those happening, especially here at the middle school. So I ask parents, and listen, if you haven't seen it, please watch on Netflix the documentary called Social Delight, it is very, very powerful. And, you know, I'm looking at faces in the audience, and I see nodding, and I'm preaching to the choir, you need to understand what is happening and going on in this country and what is happening to our kids. I was absolutely appalled three weeks ago when TikTok sat in Congress, sat there, and not one Congresswoman or one Congress member or senator had the nerve to hold up and say what is actually on this platform, what they're asking kids to do, the dares they're asking kids to take. Do you know, ladies and gentlemen, that they have a calendar of 10 months like we have for school, and they have things for kids to do every month? And believe it or not, kids do, sometimes they do them in school, sometimes they do them at home, and kids are getting hurt, they're getting themselves put in a lot of trouble, and sometimes kids die because of these TikTok stuff. So in, in retrospect, okay, I get it, in local parent day, we're the parent when they come into school and they have to follow the code of conduct, but this needs to be a partnership. You know, they lost a lot of schooling, they need to concentrate as much as they can on their studies when they're in school, never mind at home. And I get it, I understand the society we're in, I understand the culture we're in, I understand about social media, but social media has a place and a time, and what we're starting to see, if I wasn't doing my job and I wasn't informing the public or the board, we're starting to see upticks, and we want to work together to make sure that we provide the students with the best possible education in a safe environment, and cellphones are not needed during the school day, okay? God forbid you need to get ahold of your son or daughter, you can call the school or vice versa. Again, this is not Mr. DeCarlo saying they shouldn't have their, again, in their locker, in their backpack, come into school, shut it down, go back to your business during the school day, after you, you're out of school, put it back on, and go home. So, you know, I, I, again, I'm confident, you know, that we will get through this little bump and a little bit of an uptick in discipline, and we'll be able to move forward, but I thought it was important to let everybody know what's happening and what's going on with regards to that. As far as buses, and buses, and, and again, we've had these conversations for the last several months, and we know, and we continue to know, this is a national problem. I'm happy to say that there are a couple of things that are going to be happening on the horizon for the vet. We do have a number of us, of applicants who have come forward, which will help us with our routes, and specifically help us with the high school after-school, you know, homework sessions and after-school clothes. So with that being said, however, it's, we work in a bureaucracy, just because somebody walks in the door doesn't mean automatically they become a bus driver, they have to go through fingerprinting, they have to go through training, they have to go through 30 hours of coursework. So in speaking with Ms. Volpe, our, our transportation supervisor, we're looking at after the holiday in December, beginning of January, onboarding at least four more drivers. What does that mean, and how does that have a positive impact? After the Thanksgiving break, meaning starting on November 29th at the high school, currently because of our priority, community and board needs to make sure we get all our kids home first, okay? And, and therefore, what has happened is normally the high school late bus will come about 3:00, it's not getting there until 3:30, 3:45. So on November 29th, they'll have two buses that will be there at 3:15, and then the other three buses at 3:30, and that will take place from November 29th till school ends, I believe it's December 23rd. After we get back from the break, hopefully we've onboarded all of these extra bus drivers, we'll be back to normal. So we'll be back to 3:00 at the high school, that the students will be able to take that late bus. Do I understand it's been an inconvenience? Yes. However, I can't control the lack of, of not having bus drivers, but we've been working on it, and I'm happy to say that we've made progress, and I know some of the high school students will be happy to hear that it's getting better for the short term, and we'll be back hopefully to normal when we get to the beginning of, of January. That's an important footnote for everybody to understand. The Bond Project, as you are aware, board members in the community, we are in a, in a stage where we're under looking at punchless items, but there also are many items that are delayed because of the, the issues that are going on with the supply chain, and products, even just making a product. So there are some areas in the, the high school that we've been able to get students back in those locations, but they are not completely finished, that does not mean that there are any, the issues that they should be in there, we're talking about working on punchless items, we're talking about the music room, they have to finish the acoustic ceiling, that all that will be done during off-hours as we move forward. I also know and I clearly understand, I wish we had $200 million to do all the kind of work that needs to be done. But I just want to remind everybody, because when you start to go through punchless items and, you know, people start to comment on the, on, on the stuff that was done, we know we have further work to do. When we initiated this discussion back in 2018, and we involved parents, we involved administrators, we involved students, we made a decision to look at the arts, we made a decision to look at instructional area, we made a decision to look at security, and we made a decision to look at that, that backfield. By no means do I understand, and I'm sure the next superintendent and this board or current board members understand, we have further work to do. And ultimately, our goal is to be able to set up a capital reserve fund to do some of this work on an ongoing basis, so that we're not waiting every 10 years to do a major product. So do I understand that there are some things that need to be done across the buildings? Yes. Are there some issues that we have to look at interior and exterior? Yes, and those conversations, I'm sure, will be had with this board moving forward as we look at phase two of the project over the next year and, and year and a half. But we do understand that we'd like to have a bucket of money, that we could do everything, you know, and, and, but we will try to do what we can do over the next number of years. But suffice it to say, you know, we're, we're back in rooms and we're, we're, we're getting there over the next couple of weeks with the finishing up those, those punchless items. Also, don't forget, please, that next Wednesday is a half-day, beginning of our Thanksgiving recess, Mahopac High School gets out at 10:15, Mahopac Middle School, Lakeview and Falls School get out at 11:00, and then Fulmer and Austin Road get out at 11:45. And just two last things, and this is, you know, I, I always hear about, we always talk about sports. Well, if you look at our paper and you look at some of the things that we do and are in our Mahopac news, it's not just about sports, it's about all the other great programs that are going on, and, and, and people are right, we have to make sure that we talk about the comprehensive programs that we have here at Mahopac High School. With that being said, that leads me into the following, we're talking about, you know, the profile for Mahopac High School because every year we, you know, we look at it and refine it, and I asked Mr. W. to do a, a run on, I want to know how many students of this year's senior class have taken a college-level course and/or AP. This is the highest number that we've had, 85% of this year's senior class has taken, in its experience, for freshmen to senior year, at least one college and/or AP class. So that is a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment, tremendous accomplishment. So we're very, very proud of the work that our students are doing, our, our teachers and our staff, it's a, it's a great tribute to all the hard work that's happening and taking place. And then, if I can just see what I did. And then last but not least, as we go into the Thanksgiving season, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you a very happy Thanksgiving. It is hard to believe that three months of school has gone so fast and Thanksgiving is upon us. During the Thanksgiving season, it's important for us all to take a moment to recognize and reflect on all the accomplishments for which we should be grateful. We should be especially grateful for the dedicated students, faculty, parents, and Mahopac community members who have embodied our resilience as a school district. I am thankful for the efforts that our students put forward each and every day, we must continue to build their confidence and love of learning. I am so grateful for the work that our teachers, staff, and administration have done during these unprecedented times. It is their work, passion, and dedication that has allowed the Mahopac Central School District to thrive. In closing, I would like to thank the community for their continued support in helping our children to become caring learners and for supporting our schools and programs. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent DeCarlo, very informative, hope everybody got a lot out of that one, boy, I'll tell you. It was a lot of information, but, but, you know, how true on where we are in society right now, and I can, I can, I know this whole TikTok thing is really a, really a problem, the social media in general, so thank you again for that update, Superintendent. Okay, we're going to move over to our, our committee reports, so I'm first one up here on HR. So HR met last Tuesday, trustee Simone, myself, and trustee Savino, along with our superintendent of schools and our assistant superintendent for human resources. Tonight, you'll see the fruits of that labor on, for tonight's HR agenda, we will be, we'll be approving this in a minute. But, but it was, you know, as you know, at these, at these meetings here, you know, we do deeper dives into, into personnel, you know, issues, and, and I think we really do a pretty good job with a fine, you know, really with a fine tooth comb to what we bring here to the board at the work session and to you, to the public here tonight. So I appreciate and thank the, the human resource committee for all that, for all that they do. I'd like to turn it over to our senior trustee Lucy Massofra for her finance report. Lucy?
Can you hear me? The finance committee met on November 9th, and the attendants was myself, Senator Ponce, Assistant Superintendent of Business. Assistant Superintendent of Business, Lisa Zerisky, she is our treasurer, our board members was myself, Ben Dulolo, and Savino, and Ray McAdams. At the meeting, we reviewed the budget calendar for 2022, 2023, and we will be approving that on tonight's agenda. We also part of that, we discussed in our February meeting, which is part of the calendar, we'll be discussing what the needs are for the various buildings and departments in the district. We also reviewed balance sheet requests for funds that we received for COVID, and we plan to be discussing that at our next meeting in further detail on December 6th. We also reviewed the current budget point in time versus budget and expenditures. Our next meeting is scheduled on December 6th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Masafra. And then let's, let's go over to our policy committee and our vice president, Adam Savino. Adam?
Sorry about that. The policy committee met, wow, last week, in attendance were President Monken, myself, trustee Masafra, our legal counsel, our legal counsel, Superintendent DeCarlo, and district clerk Melody LaRaca. We reviewed policy 6430, staff participation in political actions. We discussed that contractors are also to be included as a form of educational service with or in the presence of students. We also reviewed policy 9140, staff complaints, policy 5630, which we're going to be, they're going to be renumbered following the NISBA numbers, once the attorney reviews them, brings them back to the committee, and the rest of the board. We had discussed change orders specific to the BON, policies surrounding that. And finally, policy 6122 and 9140, again, staff complaints and grievances. We're going to, we're going to streamline a little bit to ensure that all employees have a proper reporting system. These items will be on the agenda for vote later. We adjourned at 8:35. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And can we go over to our ad hoc committee and our chairman of the ad hoc, Ben Dulolo? Ben?
Okay, so on November 4th Thursday, the introductory meeting of the educational reform and advocacy ad hoc committee took place. We had 10 community members, one person cannot attend shared conflict. I'm not going to go through the names these minutes, by the way, are attached to the website and you can see them there. Attending from the Board of Ed was myself, Mike Monken, Michael Simone, Tanner had a conflict, but I wrote a statement on his behalf very quickly. When we went through, we talked about the goal of the committee, we went through meeting ground, we reviewed a time, a plan and a timeline. We introduced each other and why people were interested in joining the committee. And we did an exercise to look at what the high-level issues were. And this, very quickly, as you can imagine, what came up at the top of the list were COVID protocols and mask mandates. Based on that and some other input we got during the week, we gave the people a homework assignment to write up a statement, and we're going to begin to draft statements that would potentially be at the busy points further. Our next meeting is Thursday, December 9th, at the PD room from 7:00 to 8:30. If people are interested, this is an open meeting, the committee is set. If people are interested in coming to attend and listen, they're welcome to do that. But the committee is now set at those 10 people. I don't, I don't want to add another word. Or are you okay?
And of course, we want to make sure that we're as open and transparent as possible so you can always come into view of the work that we do. Of course, anything final moving forward has to come to the board, that's just how ad hoc committees are. And it's also important that we get community input, the board's on board, whatever we come to. But again, there's a lot of really active community members on this committee, so you maybe may not be on it, and you can only come and listen, you can't speak, talk to your neighbors, talk to your, the community members on here. If you have an issue that you want the committee to talk to, so there's still ways to get involved without being a committee member. You can go and watch, you can always talk to one of the trustees or one of the community members on the committee. So there's a lot of ways to get involved with what we're doing.
All right, thanks. All right, thank you. President Monken, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vice President Savino has a, has an addendum to his, to his minutes for policy, so I will turn it back to the vice president.
There you go. Sorry for the confusion there, one. Part of the policy committee meeting also included 7630, construction policies. In the detail, we had some discussions on the requirements of the policies, health safety committee, requiring you to walk through and so on and so forth. That's a work in progress, we're going to reconvene and have some updates for that in the future. Policy 2130 and 1312E, if you familiar with the policies at all, we're actually due to look at policies, so we will be rescinding 1312E. And then finally, the policy committee decides to change the subsequent numbers to policies and reviewing accordance with the sequence of all applicable policies. It's been a long process and we're finally getting traction with it, so hopefully over the next year or so, we'll be all back in line for easy viewing for everyone that's interested. That is all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'll be easier to follow on the, on board docs and the, and the website when we get the numbers all in sequence since we're transitioning from one, from one set of, of policies over to the NISBA policy. So I know that we've been working on that for, well, I've been on the board for six years and I think we've been working on it for five of the six years, so hopefully we'll have that, hopefully we'll have that squared away in, in shortcoming. So thank you, Mr. Vice President. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to ask, we have a donation, and I'd like trustee Dulolo to please read this evening's donation.
Absolutely. All right, resolve, on recommendation of the superintendent of school, the board of education hereby accepts a donation of $500 from the O'Brien Architecture LLC to be used toward the Austin Road Garden at Austin Road Elementary School. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank O'Brien Architecture. Thank you very much.
That's awesome. Thank you. So can I get a motion to accept the donation? Thank you, trustee Dulolo. Can I get a second?
Second.
Trustee McDonough, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have, we have a consent agenda this evening. What I'd like to do right now is just ask that we, we have one item on 5C, I'd like to table 5C. We have a special meeting coming up on the 30th and we'll, we'll be able to rectify the, the issue right there. So I'd like to remove, remove that and then, and then ask everyone right now to, to approve tonight's consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept?
Mr. President, which agenda item was it?
It's, I believe it's 5C. It's the non-instructional?
I thought it's, I see it letters.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, under, oh, it's 5C under X.
Yeah, 714.
One second.
Here we go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole section under C.
Just, just C, yeah, we're going to, we table that, we're going to move that over to the 30th.
Is that in the motion to table that?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to approve the consent agenda with that removed and then, and then we can do, we'll, we'll, we'll motion to table.
You hoping to motion it to that afterwards? Or you said, do we table first and then approve your consent agenda?
Can we cut to table and first?
Okay, that's fine. So can I get a motion to table the 5C?
So moved.
Thank you, Ben. Second?
Second.
Vice President Savino, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now can I get a motion to accept this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Vice President Savino, second?
Second.
Trustee McCracken, all in favor?
Aye.
Now the exciting part, which, which we all love and, and we look forward to, we do, and we really do, and we appreciate that we have, we have residents that would like to speak this evening. So I will turn it over to our district clerk, Melody LaRaca. Melody has a, has a list of people that will be speaking this evening. Melody?
I have Eva.
Come on up, Eva.
Okay. So, hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Ava Van Artwick, the junior class president here at Mayapac High School. I'm coming to you today with some pressing concerns about our district as a whole. To begin, I would like to address the school bathrooms at the high school, male, female, and student and teacher. I completely understand as a student the wear and tear of the school bathroom throughout the day, but speaking from experience, the second-floor girls' bathroom rarely has two working soap dispensers, sinks, and even toilets with a lock installed. The others, from what I've been told, are in the same position. With our school being renovated compared to getting things like a new turf, issues like the bathrooms need to be addressed. Second, the prioritization of the attention to our arts and music programs. I love the community that has been formed around our football games, but while our athletes get recognized on the loudspeaker and on our website, our highly-championed academic students and music students, as well as less popular sports, rarely get recognized. The music department just put on their first in-person indoor concert in almost two years. We have many students going to all-state orchestras and not once did I hear any of them recognized anywhere but last night at the concert. As well as, the girls' cross-country team got second in their league, and I didn't even know about that until yesterday when a friend told me. It's great that some of these issues of attention are beginning to be expressed, but there's still a clear need for the advocacy and equity of all scholastic activities. Thirdly, the disrespectful treatment of the female population by teachers and administrators. From microaggressions to condescending comments to being flat-out misogynistic, something has to change. From being told I'm pulling the women card to being called emotional for answering a question in class, and these are just my own experiences. I can only imagine that if this is going on at Mayapac High School, there is more happening that students are not speaking up about. It's not just people being sensitive, it's about a basic expectation of mutual respect between teachers and students. Fourthly, the mental and emotional support for our students, specifically those who don't reach out. I know our guidance counselors and social workers are busy, but something has to bend so that students can make actual connections with their counselors instead of a five-minute check-in once a year. With nearly 1,500 students in our school alone, I get that that's a lot of help to give, but the students I'm surrounded with, like myself, need more emotional and mental support from those other than parents and friends, but someone who we can consistently count on for advice for our future. Decreasing support in recent years by not hiring an aid counselor has had an impact on student support. The need for support will only increase. The last issue I wanted to address are buses, which thankfully have already been, began to be addressed at our school. I completely understand the shortage of buses, bus drivers, and everything in between in our district as brought to my attention by our school newspaper, which achieved it. So it's great that our high school students are finally going to have an appropriately timed late bus that won't discourage students from engaging in extracurricular activities that makes for a well-rounded student and citizen of our community. I believe that all these concerns can be readily fixed. I even have my own proposition for all of them. These needs must be prioritized so that students and teachers alike can have a more equitable experience at Mayapac High School. I have a platform as student body president to help push for the changes that most of our student body have been waiting for since middle school. I'm hoping that the board will use your influence to help facilitate these necessary and essential changes. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I hope that we can partner in the future to make Mayapac High School a better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ava. That was terrific. Thank you so much. Ava?
Ava, can you hear me? No, that's okay. You can, you can sit back down. So Ava, very eloquent, very, very well-spoken, and I commend you because you are a leader, and that's what we usually do. We usually get up and they talk about their feelings, they talk about their classmates, and, and kudos to you. That's an example of what Mayapac is all about. So what I, I will do is I will reach out to you, if it wants to be you or the junior group of folks, and we'll sit down and we'll talk. Some of the things, your ideas that you have, there's some things that we can talk about because, lead or not, it's good timing, we're starting our budget for next year, and we can talk about some of these things. So my secretary, Melody LaRaca, will email you and we'll sit down and have a follow-up conversation, okay? And then, congratulations, young lady, that's a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Melody, next up?
Hey, fellas, how are you? How are you? It was tough act to follow.
Yeah, really.
Very well said. So I'm Kate Braly Bellantoni. My son Dylan is in kindergarten at Fulmer Road, and I came here to speak of two issues one you already touched on, but I will start with mine first. So I guess my question is, who vets the books that are placed into our school libraries? I'm not sure if you guys have seen all the videos of parents coming to school board meetings, reading excerpts from books that are, quite frankly, just pornographic in nature and completely inappropriate for a child to read. I'm not talking about exploring gender or sexuality, but rather detailed descriptions of sex, rape, molestation, and the left. My oldest is only in kindergarten. God help what will be in the libraries by the time he hits high school if we don't have a clear screening process yet to be established. So can you touch on who's responsible for bringing the books in, who scans the books before they hit the shelf in detail, and whether there's an online catalog for parents to be able to view what is available to their children? And this goes for all schools?
So, Mrs. Bellantoni, I suggest, because it's a lengthy conversation, that you reach out to this gentleman right here, he's our assistant superintendent for instruction, Mr. Mike Metrombly, he will set up a meeting with you, he can explain to you what happens and what goes into it and how it happens. He'll talk to you a little bit about how books are selected as a part of our Leaders Wires workshop that we have kindergarten and actually going right through the middle school and eighth grade, how those books are selected, process of how it's done, how it's incorporated, and then he can take you through how the high school selects what they do and what's there, because it's a much lengthier conversation, but he can definitely take you through what exactly happens, how it happens, and then, you know, how it gets placed on the shelves.
Okay. And I understand that, and I will take you, I will take you up on that, but I'm sure there's other parents too that are wanting to know this information.
So you can, you can meet with him first individually because you're born up as that issue, and then as Mr. Metrombly will be doing his recording as a part of presentation to the board, I'm sure the board would, you know, he can follow up with them also, and at that presentation, we'll make sure that the community gets it.
Yes, I definitely agree. Okay. And you just, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm just, I'm honestly curious.
No, I understand.
Have you guys, have you guys seen these videos, read these excerpts?
Yes, yes.
Right over in Heart Valley, our neighbors, all over the US, it's, it's a problem and it's not okay. Okay, so my second one, you actually already touched on this right away, about vaccines on school property. I know a few weeks ago you had talked about it and you said, as far as concerns, not on school property. I felt the passion in your voice just now, and I thank you for that, to keep it off of the school property, because I think we can all agree right now, this world is way too divisive, it's a really sad state, and I hate the world we're living in right now. And I think that bringing vaccines onto campus will cause this divide even amongst our youngest, you know, the elementary, kindergarten, my son is five. So it's good to know that you still feel this way, but with all due respect to you, because you are leaving at the end of this year, I am kind of curious how the rest of the board feels, because I know you're the leader of the group and you feel this way, once you're gone, is all of a sudden the table's going to flood?
Well, I, I mean, I can, I mean, I can speak, speak over here. I mean, I'm, we're not, I can speak for the board, I believe. We're not, we're not interested in having vaccination sites here at the school. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a personal, it's a personal choice. It's something that, that goes with- It's something that goes with your pediatrician and your doctor and your family. You know, I mean, I think that's just as clear as it can be. I mean, this is, you know, this is education, this is learning, you know, that's, you know, I mean, you know, vaccine, vaccinations, personal choice, and, you know, I know that we have mandates that are all around us, but I don't think you'll see that over, I don't think you'll see that over here. That's not something that we're interested in. We're interested in education.
All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mangan.
Melissa, where is it? Oh, okay, she's not here. No, that's it.
That's it? Okay, very good.
That's fine.
Okay, so, okay, so that's it, and I, once again, as you've heard me before, I thank everybody for the, that has the courage to come up here and speak to us. I know it's difficult, it's tough, but as you can see, it's a, I mean, we're, you know, we're all ears right over here, and we all want to do what's right for, you know, for our school's community and our community. So again, I commend everybody that spoke tonight and reach out to the people that are out on the, that are out on the airways over there, that it's a, you know, friendly environment over here, and if you feel like you want to come down and spend some time over here in a meeting, come on down. So we thank you very much. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to motion, so we're going to motion to go into executive session right now. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to motion to go into executive session.
What's the reason?
For, to discuss personal.
For sale?
Yeah.
Okay.
So get a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved. Vice President Savino, second?
Second.
Vice President, trustee McDonough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.